Get some follow-up information from our budget retreat, get an update on the facility study, and have a discussion of emergency paid sick leave. Are there any other items that people would like to add to the agenda for our briefing meeting? All right, then this will be our agenda, and let's go ahead and get started on the COVID-19 and vaccine update, and Stacy Saunders and Fletch over here to help us out with this.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time and attention today as we provide the COVID-19 situational report with an update on vaccine rollout, and Max, whenever you're ready, thank you so much. So we'll begin with how many cases and other indicators, those indicators that we've been looking at, and as of today. Thank you, sir. So as of today, we've identified 12,040 confirmed cases in Buncombe County since the pandemic start, 230 COVID-19 deaths have been identified, and our current new cases per 100,000 per week is 368. And now that is actually down from the previous week. After several weeks of consistently increasing percent positivity, locally, we are seeing our first week of significant decrease in the number of tests that are coming back positive. Our current percent positivity is 9.5%, and while this is still far from the desired 5% or less, it is a welcomed improvement from the 12.5% we experienced not quite two weeks ago. Regional hospitalization data continues to show what appears to be what I called a high-level plateau last week. There was a slight dip in the hospitalizations about a week ago, but now you can see again that stabilization and high-level plateau. Our current metrics have shown some improvements since last week, and currently, as I mentioned, the new cases per 100,000 remains high, but we did see that decrease, and these are the numbers as of today, since the state did not update the dashboard yesterday, I went ahead and pulled them for you today, so you had the most recent. New cases per 100,000 population did decrease in the last week, but it still remains high. You can still see that in the red. In the two weeks prior, we were noticing that slowing of the rate of the increase in those new cases per 100,000 with another, like, again, another high-level plateauing. This week, we actually are seeing a slight decline in that indicator, still in the red, but when we look at the derived indicator from change in new cases per 100,000 population from week to week, that indicator is actually coming into the yellow, so we did see a decrease. We saw the percent positivity, as I mentioned earlier, decline this week. I'm sorry, that should say 9.5, the percent positivity, which would still put us in the orange. And then the change in test positivity from week to week also showed a favorable decline, so putting us in the green. And so, again, this is just the first week where we are seeing that significant decrease in percent positivity. The deaths per 100,000 population per week is at 9.1, which is still red, but we, again, saw in the derive indicator from change in week to week, we saw that go down in a favorable direction. The hospital data continues to be stable for the second week in a row. There was not a significant change in the percent inpatient hospital beds occupied by COVID-19, nor was there a significant change in the percent ICU beds occupied by COVID-19. I did want to take a bit of a deeper dive into the indicators, given that you are set to review restrictions placed that were effective January 2nd, and I thought it might be more helpful to sort of look at those in particular. So the first is the current Epi curve for Buncombe County. You can clearly see the post-Thanksgiving surge that continued into the December holidays, and following that surge in the recent days, this is where we can start to see that high-level plateau emerge, that if we were to draw a trend line there, that we would start to see that very high, but start to level out just a bit. I did want to make note of the percent change in new cases per 100,000 per week, I mentioned this earlier, when we look at the percent change in new cases per 100,000 per week, we can see an overall decrease since December 22nd, and this is indicative of that slowing of the cases, new cases, that I mentioned earlier. And while they remain high, there is some early indication, particularly this week, with a decrease in new cases per 100,000 per week of a plateau. Still too early to say that we're coming down from the surge, but looks like we might be staying at a high level with slowing of the increases. And then when we look at the percent positivity deeper dive, we can see here that the percent positivity increased significantly just before the new year, we were seeing the increase start with its highest rates right there in early January. So when we looked at right before Christmas, we were seeing our 8.2%, and that had a steady incline until just about right before New Year's, where we saw it increase significantly, and now we've started to see that come down as we've entered the post-holidays. And as I mentioned earlier, our current rate is about 9.5%. This is the first week over week that we've seen a significant decrease. Last week, when I reported to you, it was still 11 point something, 11.7, which was a change from 10.5, I believe, the week before that, but in between that 10.5 and that 11.7, it had gotten as high as 12.5. So this is the first week-to-week change where we've seen a significant decrease in the percent positivity. And then when we look at the hospitalizations, and this is the inpatient census, the blue line is system-wide for HCA, and then the orange is just mission-specific, and you can see these are parallel and very similar, very similar in their trends, but what I'm looking at right now is at the, right before the holidays, we were seeing that at a fairly high level. It increased and was at a very high level just around the beginning of January with a small dip, and now we start to see that, again, still at a high level, plateauing but, or straightening out a little bit. So with that, that concludes the situational report regarding the indicators. We wanted to provide you a little bit more detailed information about those as a board, as you review and reflect on the restrictions. So indicators are showing some improvements for the first time in many weeks. We typically pull this data on Mondays and are able to provide you another data point on January 25th, if it pleases the board, in order to make a decision. And if you'd like me to continue, I'll go into vaccine rollout.
Thank you so much, Stacy. Yeah, it's good to hear some positive news, even though it's in the context of an awful lot of COVID transmission and sickness occurring in the community, at least it's not growing in the way that we saw it at the end of the year and the beginning of 2021, so that's great to hear. So just to maybe just kind of summarize what I'm hearing in terms of the process, so the health team kind of reviews all the data on Mondays each week. So you'd like to have this additional week to review the numbers coming in this week to confirm that the trends of stabilization and hopefully continued improvements, to see that those trends do continue out and look a little more firm, and you could then review the data on Monday next week, and if they continue to look positive, that would give some reassurance that the threat of the hospital really being seriously overrun appears to be diminished compared to where we were in December when we adopted the indoor dining policy and could potentially consider using the state policy going forward if the data continues to look stable or improved.
Yes, I think one more data point would give us a little bit more information about, especially given that this is the first week that we've seen some of those indicators really decrease versus stay stable.
Okay, so that review would be on Monday, the 25th, and if it looks positive, then we could consider going ahead and making the decision at that time to go with the state policy, and the commission also has a meeting the following day, too, so if we, I mean, of course, so I could use my authority to go to the state policy, or the commission can meet the next day, so if we could also have a commission discussion about it at that meeting as well, if we desire to. Commissioners, are there any questions? All right, I think we're good on, thank you for the updates, and we'll hope for continued good news, and continue to ask for the community's support in keeping these numbers going in a more positive direction, and hopefully that'll allow us to make a decision next week that I know a lot of folks would like to have us do in terms of the restrictions policy on indoor dining, so. All right, Stacy, what's next?
All right, so on to vaccine.
Before we move on, sir, will we put this on the agenda on the 26th, or with that Tuesday special meeting, just go ahead and add this to the agenda?
So we should definitely have an update at that meeting, I think regardless, so that sounds good to me. I mean, I would say, you know, yeah, let's plan on doing that.
Ready for me to continue? So just a reminder that the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services did change their prioritization plan on January 14th to align with the federal administration recommendations. This change went into effect January 15th. This change did come as locally, we had already implemented and scheduled our appointments under the previous iteration of the vaccine prioritization, so we will begin really incorporating the new phases, which were really just amended phases at the end of this week and beginning next week. And so just as a reminder, aligning to the federal recommendations, the first group one, what they're calling now, so they collapsed many of those subgroups that we were seeing prior, and group one now is healthcare workers and long-term care facility staff and residents, with group two being 65 years and older. And so I just wanted to give a reminder from last week that shipment about vaccine and how that occurs, that we typically receive our notification of shipment on a Friday with the actual vaccine arriving Tuesday afternoon or early on Wednesday, and the vaccine that arrives on the Wednesday is used typically to finish out that week and to make sure that we have enough vaccine for the appointments that we have promised at the beginning of the week until the new vaccine shipment comes in. So typically a Wednesday to Tuesday type of process. And I just wanted to put out, you know, make sure that folks are aware that Public Health has advocated for additional doses and has been working with both state and local partners to get more vaccine into our community. This includes working with the Western North Carolina Regional Collaborative, which is state and local partnerships. That includes other health departments, community health centers, and hospitals in our western North Carolina area, and as a part of that collaborative, Buncombe County Health and Human Services received an additional 500 doses last week that were able to expand our available appointments this week, and our colleagues in Madison County also received a bump in vaccine and have expanded their mass vaccination reach as well. And one of the tenants of the collaborative was to have community health centers come on board as well, and the first one to do that in our region was Blue Ridge, who also received vaccine and is working to start up their vaccination efforts. So this is good news that we are starting to see more providers, though slowly, we're seeing more providers get enrolled. We are looking forward to having two other community health centers anticipated this week, which would be Winches and Appalachian Health. It is expected that they will be receiving small vaccine allotments, and in anticipation of their onboarding, we actually invited Winches to come shadow our vaccination site so that they could get an understanding of flow, like, how does the clinic flow, what are the operations like, what are best practices? And then leading into that, I just wanted to share that in addition to the collaborative, Health and Human Services has worked with Mission Health to initiate vaccine transfer to increase the number of vaccine that we can get out into the community. And what you see here is our inventory of first dose, what it looked like earlier today. You will see that the shipment that came in today is not on here yet because it came in after this was created. So what you're seeing is current inventory of first dose, and you can see our first three shipments, 1221, 1230, and 15 have all been depleted. We are currently working on that fourth shipment there, and it is on its way to be depleted today, probably already is by the time I'm talking, and have moved into our bump from last week and soon to move into our transfer from Mission, likely today or early tomorrow. And I wanted to also state that we did receive our notification last Friday of what we would receive this week, our regular doses of 975 Pfizer are coming to us, and another 500 bump from the Western North Carolina Collaborative that we're doing as a region that arrived, at least one of those arrived today, and we will be working to utilize that 500 Moderna doses as that bump to help expand our reach into healthcare workers and utilize our 40Cox site for that. So while still limited, that's, you know, we're grateful for whatever amounts that we get in addition to our regular shipment, they are still very limited, but do allow us to improve and sort of allow us to increase our appointments.
Stacy?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. So this number on the shelf, 1221, 1230, and 15, that means that they have received their second dose now, them was the ones put back?
No, what you're seeing here is the number, these are all first dose, so of the shipment we received, 1221, we received 700 doses of Moderna. Each one of those vials, sometimes you can get an extra dose out of, so we actually administered 712 doses to people. This is all their first dose. There are no more of that shipment on the shelf. And then going forward, the second shipment, we received 975 of Pfizer. We were actually able to get a few more doses out of each one of those files, and we're able to actually administer 1,112. There are no more of that shipment on the shelf. So we have depleted our first three shipments and are moving into the later shipments. You're not, I don't have second dose on here yet because those just came, and we're starting to get people their second dose that were in the old version of Phase 1A, which were medical first responders, healthcare workers critical to COVID-19 care, and long-term care facility staff and residents. So they're, those first folks that we did that week of Christmas and the week of New Year's are just now getting their second doses.
So does that mean that the supply, and I'm sorry, Parker, I'll come right back to you, does that mean that this, the 975 and the 500 that we now have or will soon have, some percentage of those will be used for second vaccinations?
No, we have a separate allocation of second doses. Right now, the state is still sending designated second doses that match your first dose allocation, so we received our second doses, which would have been 700 of Moderna and 975 of Pfizer. You're not seeing that there, here, this is all first dose because we just started second doses.
And what's the supply of second doses we have on hand?
So it would be 700, we received 700 Moderna. It will match the first two shipments that you receive up there, 700 Moderna, 975 Pfizer, but we started giving folks their vaccines this week, and so I do not have a good number for that one today, but by next week.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I know you've said this, I'm just trying to make sure I'm hearing it correctly, so the numbers on this chart, on this slide, don't reflect the additional vaccines that we have for vaccine number two?
It does not.
Okay.
This is all first dose.
Got it.
All first dose.
Got it. Parker?
You gave me a second question to ask, which is that I understand these vials sometimes have extra vaccine in them, so how does it work with the second dose when we're getting the standard quantity shipped to us?
Very good question. So we have to be very careful and make sure that we are as careful drawing up the second doses as we were the first so that we can get those additional doses out of them. So that is absolutely at the forefront of our minds and our nurses and pharmacists who are drawing that up, that you have to be very careful, you have to be, you have to know what you gave the first time, and make sure that you're drawing up just as much.
Okay. And then my question from before, I guess briefly, can you explain to us that this WNC collaborative in terms of where those extra, again, in air quotes, vaccines are coming from, are they from one place, is it a collection of?
So my understanding of the first week was you all had asked about the federal program to vaccinate long-term care facilities with CVS and Walgreens, and last week I had mentioned that they had received, I believe, 169,000 doses, but had only given out about 40,000 at that time. So the state suspended their allocations, and that suspension allowed for other parts of our state to get those doses. So that's where that first bump came from. I think that's where the second bump was coming from because they suspended it for a second week to allow those CVS and Walgreens to start using the doses that were on their shelf. So we, we as the, I was the Western North Carolina Collaborative, got some of those doses, some hospital systems got some of those doses in the triad and triangle to do different types of events.
Okay, well, it sounds like maybe we should come back to talk about the drugstore situation, but I think what I heard you say is that despite it being a federal program, the state of North Carolina is responsible for shipping the vaccines to CVS and Walgreens, is that correct?
They are responsible for allocating to them, so the federal government tells the state of North Carolina, you get X amount of doses. Off the top of that allotment to North Carolina has to go the long-term care facility federal program, and then the rest is distributed throughout the state. So the state has indicated to the federal government that they would suspend that allocation to the long-term care facility, federal programs, as they have many doses on their shelves and have not vaccinated all their doses yet.
Thank you, I'll stop asking.
I have one follow-up question. In terms of, so the state, the state is informed how many vaccines will come to our state, and then they have an allocation process for our state. In terms of how things are distributed, are they distributed to a state location and then from there out to different places within the state, or the state has an allocation plan and then they're shipped from a Moderna or Pfizer facility directly to the different recipients? Is that how it works?
Correct.
Okay.
Just a quick question on the slide you just were on. If we look at this data and then look at the new vaccine dashboard on the state site, I just want to make sure I understand how to track those two pieces of data. My understanding is that on the state site, that would be inclusive of these shots reflected here plus what Mission, HCA, has administered, but not including long-term care. So on a daily basis, if we're trying to just keep an eye on this, that tells us, the state site shows us what Mission plus the health department have done, but it's probably not real-time data.
The state dashboard will show you what any provider other than the long-term care facility federal vaccinators have done. So I don't want to say, I don't want to say just the hospital and the health department because that, those enrolled providers are hopefully going to expand.
Right.
So when you see, when you see it on the dashboard, it's how many vaccines have been administered in Buncombe County, with the exception of those CVS, Walgreens, federal program, long-term care facilities.
Okay, great, and as of today, those two providers would be the health department plus Mission, but moving forward, it'll be an expanding unit.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Yep.
Correct.
So on January 14th, NCDHHHS did recalibrate the guidance, and it did expand some of those healthcare workers, specifically dental hygienists and dentists. What is the plan to ensure that we're incorporating, you know, specifically them and the others who have been recalibrated into 1A, and is that a place where we could potentially utilize that partnership with Mission so that we are ensuring that our frontline healthcare workers are also being vaccinated as well?
Yes, all of that has occurred, so with our 500 bump this week, we are providing appointments at 40Cox for our healthcare workers who were not originally in the 1A iteration. That includes our dental community. They have received that, those additional healthcare workers that were not in the initial 1A category have received notification from our medical director, and those appointments were opened at 40Cox for our healthcare workers. Yes. Careful. And as far as working with our hospital, yes, we have been in talks with Mission Hospital about how they may be able to utilize some of their vaccine to also help provide vaccinations for that now expanded healthcare worker group. And I just wanted to give you an example of what it looks like, and so for just one week of planning or allocations, and this is just for this week of January 18th, that we had 2,845 appointments scheduled for this week. We actually have 2,285 vaccines scheduled for use that were in our inventory at that time, which means that we had 560 vaccine appointments that had to be covered by the next shipment, which is the one that came in today. So we are always working on a deficit as the next shipment comes in, and that is, that is the nature of the week-to-week, getting only a week-to-week notification from the state about what your allocation will be. So we open up appointments ahead of time, at least two weeks out, for a minimum of 500, and that will likely increase over time as our projections increase. And then as we receive notification of our shipment, we increase those, or add to those appointments so that it becomes much more than just 500 a week, it becomes 2,845. And then even doing that, we still always have a deficit until the next shipment comes in, and so we are always running from week to week until, we do not have the amount of supply at this time that one whole week would be covered by one whole shipment. I'm just going to start with a little bit of the update and then turn it over to Fletch. So we, as I mentioned on the other slide, we received our first shipment on December 21st. In less than 24 hours of that shipment, we began vaccinating what used to be called Phase 1A on December 22nd. During that time, as we were at Irwin Hills doing the old 1A, we began planning how to increase our footprint and how to increase our capacity, and that's when we began the AB Tech operations that started January 11th with the initial capacity of 2,000 per week, and now exploring how, now exploring and getting ready to execute high school drive-throughs for second doses beginning January 25th. This will allow AB Tech to be our designated first-dose site and increase its capacity so that all second doses would be able to be at another site with its own capacity. And Fletch will be talking much more about that. And vaccine rollout and scheduling first dose, we have heard our community, we have heard our leaders, that scheduling is not the easiest thing in the world with limited doses. So beginning, launching this week, we will be launching a waitlist, and an individual can call to be put on the waitlist based on the phases, and currently we have phases one and two open of the current and revised vaccination plan. The waitlist will open to others as the other phases open, so right now, the waitlist would include those in phase one and two, and as phase three opens, then you would be incorporated, and folks can call, when it's launched this week, folks will be able to call the 250-5000 or visit buncomready.org to put themselves on the list or have a call member help them get on the list. They will be placed on the list, and then as we open appointments, our call team will call them and give them an appointment so they don't have to keep calling back. And those appointments, remember, are based on what phases we are in, right? So if you don't meet the criteria for phase one and two, the waitlist is meant to give So if you don't meet the criteria for phase one and two, the waitlist is meant to give appointments for those who are in those phases. So the pros here is that it eliminates the need to call in for, or to continually try to call in for an appointment. We hope that it will reduce the call volume and the stress. And you'll be placed on a waitlist based on the current phases. Potential cons that we did want to make folks aware of, that it's still not a perfect system. So the new phases, as the new phases are rolled out, they will immediately be at the bottom of the list. But then what happens is that once a phase opens, then all the phases are kind of equal. And so if, right now, we're in phase one and two, and when we open phase three, they'll be at the bottom. But if someone else from phase one and two called in after the fact, they will, they will be timestamped. So it's all a continuous timestamp. We do anticipate that folks might sign up for multiple lists and accept multiple appointments, which could hinder some of that ability to make, we do not want folks to make appointments with multiple providers and then become no-shows at vac sites because it is very important that people understand that we thaw out and get enough vaccine ready for that day. Wasting vaccine is not an option. And so we would just want that to be, we just want folks to be aware of that. We do anticipate that call volume and web traffic may still be high, particularly as new phases get implemented. But then that will come down as people can continually put themselves on that waitlist. But the first day or so might be higher.
Stacy, you have a question.
Sure.
And thank you for working on this. I think this sounds really positive. So with the waitlist process, that means when we get new shipments on Fridays, there won't be a call, like basically the process is to get on the waitlist. It's not to call when we get new doses that week. It's to get on the list and you'll be scheduled and we'll get to everyone as soon as we can based on the supplies increasing. That's the process.
That's correct. So when we open up those new appointments, you won't have to rush in to call. We'll work off that list that we have and call you and say, all right, we have appointments. Here's your available, here's your first available appointment. All right, great. We've got you, we've got you in there. But we do anticipate that as new phases open and folks want to get on that waitlist because the new phase is open, we might still see a lot of call volume. We might see a lot of traffic on the website.
Understood.
Got a, I guess a vague question. I think this is the third or fourth time the phases have changed since this has started.
You are correct. Yes.
Which, it's been not even thirty days?
Correct.
So I guess without, I'm not, I don't have a specific question for you. But what challenges might that bring, a system like this, for you?
That's a wonderful question. And you are correct that it has changed multiple times in a short period of time. So the challenge, I will tell you, the most recent challenge has been with the state changing on, notifying us that they were changing January fourteenth with an effective date January fifteenth, has been that we had already planned and scheduled appointments based on the previous iteration. And so there is an expectation when the Department of Health and Human Services or the governor says we're going into a new phase, that you will be able to incorporate them immediately. But that, at a local level, it's hard to turn that around or to turn that on a dime.
Of course.
And so, you know, I think that that has been one of the challenges that folks heard, hey, I'm in these new phases and I need to get a vaccine. Yet we had already scheduled out all of our available vaccine at that time. So we, you know, we try really hard to help people understand that you're, yes, we are incorporating you, but we, we had given all of the appointments for our vaccine at this time. So we're going to work to try to find more vaccine and then open appointments for you. So that's where you saw the bump. We decided to use our bump this week from the Western North Carolina Collaborative specifically for our healthcare workers. And then now with the implementation of a waitlist this week, that we'll be able to get through some of those. But that's one of the challenges is that as soon as they change it at the state level, it's much harder to change it at a local level when you've put appointments out. You have folks getting ready to show up and your vax plan is in place.
And with the data collection, I guess that goes into the waitlist in terms of the data you're taking from an applicant or whatever we're calling them, is it your intention to collect enough data from that person to know what phase they qualify under?
Correct. That's right.
Despite?
So without getting way into the weeds with it, yes, the answer is yes. That on the website or if you were to call in, you'll ask a couple, you'll be asked a few very simple questions that are you over sixty-five? Are you a healthcare worker? And if the answers are yes, then you clearly meet the phases. If you are, you know, under sixty-five and not a healthcare worker, then you don't meet the phases right now and you'll have to wait until the waitlist for phase three opens up if you're a frontline essential worker. So yes, there's some screening questions. And so just what's the plan for the waitlist? And so we are already training and getting our ready team. And they'll be notified and queued up for calls. The website will be updated to reflect the current phases. I just sort of mentioned that on the website, we call them the big buttons. There'll be big buttons that say, are you a healthcare worker? Are you sixty-five or older? If, are you, you know, there will be a button for folks who are neither one of those things so that they can understand where they are in the process. And then the phone tree message will be updated to reflect those, that waitlist option as well. Mass notifications will be sent out when the new phase, when we enter a new phase and the waitlist is open for that new phase. And the waitlist, again, you can get on the waitlist when it's launched through Buncombe County, buncomready.org or by calling 250-5000.
So you can get on the waitlist by going to the website and clicking on a button?
Yes.
Or placing the phone call?
Correct.
Either option.
Correct.
Okay.
We still needed both options for folks.
Yeah, makes sense.
And will the phones be answered eight to five?
Correct. Right. Later this week. Later this week. Yes, please be patient as we are building this. And we want to be sure that it is as right as it can be for folks to be able to use it most effectively. So you will see notification coming out when it's ready for folks to be able to call. So vaccine rollout for the second doses, just quickly, that beginning January twenty-fifth, second doses will be provided at our drive-through sites at designated high schools. I want to give a big shout-out to public health, emergency management, fire departments, and our Buncombe County schools for all their hard work on getting our drive-through sites up and ready. And for those receiving their first dose prior to January twenty-first, so Commissioner Whitesides, will receive a call from the team with details on your date, your location, and what window of time for your second dose. And so we'll be making those calls later this week and early into next week so that folks who received, so our group that was in the iteration called Phase 1B Group One, who got their vaccines on January eleventh, will get all their information about how to get their second dose. For those who are receiving their first dose at AB Tech beginning January twenty-first, they will receive a card that says your second dose is on this date, at this location, at this time. Fletch is going to go over more of that with you. I just want to put that out as part of the update. And then I'm going to give it to Fletch to go through more of that.
So Brownie, can you summarize that again? These are the points we want to make sure the public gets. And we talked about making sure that we pause and summarize that. So would you summarize that point again on the second dose card? It's like a doctor's appointment card that you'll get when you leave.
So let me see if I got this, got this right.
Put it back up on the screen.
So the AB Tech site is going to be dedicated to administering first shots, first vaccines. And we're going to open up a high school site, a drive-through location for people seventy-five or older, now sixty-five plus, to, who've already received one vaccine to receive their second vaccine. So we'll have a dedicated second vaccination site. And AB Tech will be reserved for first vaccinations to keep that system as clean as possible in terms of intermingling first vaccines and second vaccinations for folks. There's going to be waitlists. It's not, it's not ready to go yet. It's going to be ready to go later this week. And folks can call or go to our website to get on the waitlist. And then the county will follow up with them to schedule an appointment as our vaccine supplies increase and we have enough shots to give to additional people. So more details than that, but I think those were kind of some of the important updates I've heard.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. And?
And I just wanted to add that allowing, being able to separate the first and second dose in two different sites allows us to increase that capacity and footprint at AB Tech. And then work up to increasing that footprint at our drive-through sites, which Fletch will talk about shortly. So this, in anticipation of lots of vaccine coming to this community, we are trying to make sure that we have the footprint for that and that we practice that each time. So each week, we are increasing those doses as we get, as we advocate for more and hopefully we'll just get more in our regular shipment.
And this is kind of in the weeds kind of detail, but in terms of people getting a follow-up phone call, that'll probably be from a, from a human being as opposed to recordings? Like it'll actually be someone calling to talk to them and talk through the scheduling of their second vaccines.
I do believe it's going to be an actual human, and that's for folks who receive their vaccine before January twenty-first.
Great. Great. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Stacy. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon. I'm going to roll into the vaccine operations, but I did want to address a couple of the questions earlier from an operations standpoint. One was about with the waitlist. I just want to make it clear, trying to set expectations for you guys because a lot of times the responses we see from the public, you guys see as well. So we do know, you know, with the waitlist, once that waitlist gets to tens of thousands of people, theoretically with our input of vaccines, you know, people are going to be scheduled out to February to March to April. Just make sure you guys are aware, there's going to be some consternation from that. And the other part for Commissioner Edwards about your question earlier from dentists and Commissioner Sloan, your question about how those change in phases affects us in operations? I think a really good example is probably what prompted your question is from the dental community. We have a group who initially wasn't in 1A, then was in 1A1, and then all of a sudden with a new phase, now they're in one. So we've told them they're in, they're out, they're back in, and now they're in, but we've already allocated this week's worth of vaccines. So that's a really good example. So now we have a community who's been jerked back and forth because of federal and state guidance, who we've already allocated vaccines, who probably are in high demand and we're doing the best we can with the extra bump to compensate for that. But it all comes down again to a supply and demand issue. We've got thousands of people in the dental field when their office is in town. And we have, you know, five hundred allotted to a health community group. So it's just competition basically at this point for who gets those first five hundred doses. And we're working as hard as we can to get them spaces as they become available. So I'm going to go into a vax operations overview. So at the AB Tech, we're receiving overwhelmingly positive feedback from people and clients who pass through there. On a week-to-week basis, we are now administering one hundred percent of our first-dose weekly allotments on that Wednesday-to-Wednesday schedule. Today's throughput, where we're seeing about six hundred at the vac site. By the time I left, our average entry, the vaccination time, is twelve minutes. That means when somebody arrives, from the time they walk into the door to the moment the injection's going in their arms, averaging is about twelve minutes. And we think that's even a little slower than our average for the general public because of the age group we're focusing on now. In addition to that six hundred at fixed sites, we're also doing about seventy mobile vac site operations today as well. And I also want to point out, Stacy kind of alluded to this, but we're currently vaccinating over a thousand more a week than is our standard allotment from the state. Our standard allotment from the state is only nine hundred and seventy-five of Pfizer. We're getting that five hundred bump from the Western North Carolina Collaborative that Stacy talked about. And for the last couple of weeks, we're getting a bump of nine seventy-five from Mission. So that's public health going out and advocating to the state and local partners that we need more vaccines because we're ready to give them out.
Fletch, that's a one-time nine seventy-five from HCA, not a, not weekly or?
It was, it's a week-to-week right now. So we received it last week and we just, we just worked with them to receive it again this week.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So that's us with our partnership with Mission System, Dr. Hathaway advocating and saying, we need, you have doses, we're ready to give them out, share those with us. Yeah, and this week should be here by the end of the week. And that's going to go to our appointments for the following week. So our expansion of vaccine operations, as of Monday, you know, our fixed site, AB Tech, increased our throughput there from two thousand to four thousand. Today is the highest throughput we've had so far. And what we're seeing is that we're even more efficient than we would calculate it on paper. And so what we thought was four thousand a week, from what we've seen, I think we can easily do a thousand a day there for a total of five thousand a week. And potentially, once we see those numbers, I have a pretty good feeling we can start pushing twelve hundred a day through the AB Tech site once we go into this new model. And we have the vaccine on hand, of course. So we're shifting models beginning, we started some of that this week by removing some of our administrative burden from pre-vaccine to post-vaccine. But fundamentally, what changes for us next week is that we're removing all second doses from the AB Tech site and moving them to vehicle-based sites at, a site at Reynolds High School initially. So what that allows us to do is focus solely on first doses at AB Tech. There's a different administrative burden for first doses versus second doses. And it's different, it just removes a lot of complications from having to have multiple vaccines, multiple doses at the same site for scheduling purposes. So the second doses will start being administered at the vehicle-based site at Reynolds High School. Vehicle-based works really well for this because there's much less of administrative burden. Basically, if they already have their vax card, they're fast-tracked right through. They don't even have, they never have to get out of the car, very minimum paperwork. We're planning process now, we're looking at having action plans for three additional high schools and with also the option of running two simultaneously. So when we're at full capacity of those schools, we think each one should have a throughput of roughly five thousand a week. So between the five thousand plus at our fixed site and the five thousand at those vehicle-based sites, with one that gives us a max throughput weekly from public health of ten thousand or potentially fifteen thousand if we have two sites in the hybrid model. There are some planning assumptions here. The first is that these projected throughputs are based on what we're seeing so far at current operations. As we scale up, you know, those mathematics might not always work out. We did see, fortunately this time, that we're more efficient than we would thought on paper. But you know, with vehicle-based, you know, it may be less efficient than we're planning, but we won't really know until we get those in full swing. And the other assumption is that at some point, right now, we're having these conversations about first and second dose. At some point, that only becomes relevant at an individual level. And what that means is at some point, we have enough supply on hand where we just open up a site. And then you come, and whether it's your first dose or second dose, you go through, you just come to a site. But right now, with such limited resources, we have to be very specific about what we allocate for first dose and second dose. So eventually, it won't be a first-dose site and a second-dose site. It will essentially be a hybrid site. So this is a stemming from some of the conversations we had last week. This is our public health burden to get us to seventy percent vaccinated in the community. There are some notional assumptions here that we know aren't necessarily true or will change, but this is a good way to kind of conceptualize what we have to do for the community and response to, I think, some of the questions and conversation we had last week. So this is assuming that public health is the only provider in the community. So this is before we account for any additional providers, which we know and hope more will come online. This isn't accounting for the Mission Hospital system. We're also, this is the assumption that as much as we could push out, will be supplied from the state. And this is also the assumption that all the vaccines we're going to be working with have the two-dose regimen, meaning we have a three-week or four-week period between first and second dose. So knowing our population from the latest census data at two hundred and sixty-one thousand, and it's, we take seventy percent of that, which is our goal, and then double that for two doses. So we have to put through three hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred doses. So if you, on the far left, you see, if we have those two sites open just for public health, doing ten thousand a week, forty thousand a month, that takes us thirty-seven weeks to get to seventy percent, assuming there's that appetite in the community. So nine and a half months. If we have those three sites functional, which gives us notionally fifteen thousand a week for sixty thousand a month, that puts us at six and a half months. And then that, this last slide is the reality based on our current allotments, where we're getting fourteen seventy-five a week with, that's from the state, not accounting the mission transfer, which is five thousand nine hundred a month, which puts us at sixty months to completion. And we know that's going to change. We know we're going to start seeing more vaccine and more providers come online. But from what we're seeing right now, just for perspective, this is the hurdle we're seeing. And then lastly, I want to talk about transfer to providers. So we're increasing our capacity so we can, you know, double and triple our current stance. But we don't want to wait. But we, we don't want to wait till we reach our current capacity before we consider transferring additional doses to providers, and here are some reasons why. One, when we have these providers in the community, we know they're a trusted source. They're already working with some unique populations or specified groups in the community, and they have those established relationships. And with those communities, because of those, those trust factor and they already know the networks, a lot of times they're going to do that better than public health. We're looking at this through an equity lens, so if we give it to providers, it means more locations, geographically dispersed throughout the community. It means different hours and it means more opportunities for community, just, just like flu, flu clinics. You could go to a supermarket, a pharmacy, some local provider and get flu, it's not just all at public health. Low distribution, so we have theoretical capacities, but we don't want to get to the point where we don't have providers online when we find out what the capacity is. So if we bring them online before that point, it allows us to achieve our true capacity and still have others online to assist us. And finally, it gives a good ramp-up time for, for providers. Doing max vaccination is a pretty complex operation. So if we start them early, it gives them time to learn the process, train their staff, and go through their own process improvement. And then we can verify as we pass the providers that they do have the appetite and the capacity to push what we're given, and then we can slowly ramp them up at a local level. I think that's the end of our slide, you have any questions for the vaccine expansion?
It's a question about, well, if you're a general practitioner's office, that office needs to be registered or approved to the state to, to give out the vaccine. But what I'm hear, but I think what I'm hearing you say is that we would be responsible for supplying the shipment to them.
So, so currently, there's only a handful of providers approved in Buncombe County. We're hoping very quickly more of those providers are approved by the state. What we don't know yet is even once they're approved, will the state be giving them direct allotments? Or will they be giving allotments to us and Mission, who then have to transfer to them? I don't think we have a clear picture on that process yet, and that's part of our, our hurdles we see in our planning processes, we just don't know that.
Seems like something we, we should, we should or could find out, is that something that, that the board could assist you with or? Do you expect to find that answer soon or?
So the state had a plan for bringing on providers. Their initial plan was hospitals and health departments, they have slowly brought on other providers. Here out in Western North Carolina, we do have a couple who have been brought on board. And with the North Carolina, with the Western North Carolina Collaborative, one did receive, that was Blue Ridge, did receive a vaccine transfer for them to be able to start doing it. As others come on board, the hope is that they will receive their vaccine allotments directly from the state. But the state has said, "To be determined" because they only have a small, for the state, they only have a small amount. So they may divvy it up to counties or hospitals, allow us to figure out, alright, how much can we do? Do we have a little bit extra that we can transfer, whether it's a health department or a hospital? And so we talk about that almost weekly with the state.
Okay.
About firming up that plan and fast-tracking those providers. Particularly as we think about what Fletch was saying, when, when we think about flu and those types of, you're going to be able to get, you know, you get a flu shot at your pharmacy, at your medical home. And particularly with our populations who are sixty-five and seventy-five and above, they have medical homes, they have trusted places, they like to get their medical care, that they may feel more familiar with that. And so we want those providers to have access and we want those providers to be practicing mass vaccination, or at least their vaccine protocols. But without enough vaccine, it's kind of hard. So what's been happening so far is provider, other providers getting transfers of small doses, small amounts, or getting a small allocation straight from the state.
As we think about who, who will be providing vaccines down the road, do we have any sense of what HCA's plan is? I know they are a closed pod, meaning they would just vaccinate their employees. And then do we know whether they would plan to stop at that point, or whether they would continue to operate as a provider of vaccines at the community level?
I'm not aware of their long-term plans, I can tell you what we've been talking through most recently.
Great.
So in the first, first phases, they were dedicated to their, to those Phase 1A healthcare workers, critical to COVID care, which was most certainly their charge. And then as time has gone on, as you heard tonight, or today, they have been talking with us about transferring more of their vaccine to the community. So we received one transfer of nine seventy-five last week. We are set to, the, a transfer was initiated today, it usually takes a couple of days, so we are likely to see that physical transfer, meaning it comes into our possession by the end of the week. The, Mission has been really open about discussing that with us, particularly if they have vaccine that they can give, being able to give that to us. And we are discussing with Mission too, about their possibility of not just in a closed pod, but how can they also help us with our healthcare workers? Particularly with groups, as you heard Fletch sort of describe, that, you know, we're in, we're out, we're in, like, how do we reach this group? That clearly now in, in this more simple vaccination process and plan are a priority in Phase One. And so we're discussing that, we have our weekly calls on Wednesday, so I imagine I'll hear more tomorrow about what their plan is to help go out into the community.
Okay, thank you, that, that follow-up on that quickly is just, it seems like, following up on Parker's question where there, there is a scenario where we could actually be the local distributor to various satellite sites. And then also looking at scenario A and B on this last slide. Any way you look at it, the county's playing a central key leadership role.
Correct.
In how this is actually going to move, and in fact, probably the largest leadership role in our county as we think about the entities that exist here. So that's sort of our charge right now, is to figure out how we step into that fully. And y'all, thank you, this is a really crisp, accessible presentation of, I know there's tremendous amount of data and logistics to distill down to something that we can digest and the community can. So thank you for the hard work and, and, and the sort of, I'm guessing a lot of work over the weekend that went into getting ready for today, so appreciate it.
Most appreciated, thank you.
Does the, does the collaborative include both the medical community entities that are interested in this, as well as some of the pharmacies, private sector entities? Are they all in the, kind of in this conversation?
In the Western North Carolina Collaborative?
Yes.
Okay, so right now, it is, it includes health departments, community health centers, and hospitals in the area. And so I should say, I, I'm sorry that Dr. Hathaway couldn't be with us, and I won't go into great detail because I do not know it. But in addition to transferring vaccine to us, here in Buncombe County at the Health Department, Mission also transferred it to other groups within the collaborative. So it's not just here in our community, but Mission is seeing the importance of getting it out into the region. So right now, that collaborative includes health departments, community health centers, and the hospitals. And each, because geographically, we're a bit different than the Triad and Triangle, and that, that regional approach allows us to be very, to customize what we need to do for our communities. And so you might have heard in the Tri, I think it was the Triad or the Triangle, very large mass vaccination sites, like in, in large municipalities, urban centers. Out here, we decided to do that a little different, knowing that geography, quite literally, the geography can be somewhat of a challenge to get to one place or to another for folks. And that being able to get vaccine in your community was a much bigger priority for us. And so we were able to work with the state to get additional doses for counties like Madison and to be able to transfer to community health centers to start trying out their process. And also to get additional doses for our own county to be able to expand our appointments, knowing how large our population is.
And so the, so the private, like the, the private pharmacies, they're not, they're not part of the collaborative.
Not at this point.
I think we've all kind of heard kind of anecdotally that, that some of them are applying to be part of the, get, get certified as well to be able to distribute the vaccines to the general public as the vaccine supplies increase. Is it, are, is there any way that we could kind of find out what their plans are too? I mean, of course, they have to get approved by the state, but it.
Correct.
But they, I'm, I'm sure within their organizations, they're thinking about, assuming we're approved, here's what we think we could probably do at our different, you know, retail locations and things like that. But I mean, it's potentially a significant capacity as well, right? I mean, I think there's like a dozen Ingles and then like another dozen CVSs and Walgreens. So the, you know, maybe twenty-five or thirty sites, potentially that could be sites. So how do we ascertain what they're thinking so it can be kind of, you know, part of the overall picture of what community capacity could look like?
So I'm going to step back just a second and say that yes, in the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Plan, they started with hospitals and health departments. And then the next wave is FQHC's, Community Health Centers. And then it's my understanding that large retail pharmacies are next. And so many of those large retail pharmacies have already started creating their plans, they're putting up their websites, they're getting themselves ready in anticipation. And so I do not, at this point, have a very good picture of what that landscape looks like locally. Only that they have not been onboarded yet, and so are not receiving vaccine yet, as far as the Department of Health and Human Services Plan is. But that our ne- next wave will be those community health centers, so that, as Fletch men- mentioned, that they are reaching populations that we are eager to serve, either through our historically marginalized populations or our equity lens, or create medical homes where this can happen too. And then the plan is to go into the large retail pharmacies. I can ask the state if they have better indications about when that will happen and who they've been talking to and, and what their plan is. But I, that has not been broached in great detail right now. But to your point, yes, the assumption is that they will be brought on board and will provide much opportunity.
Either through their own allocations or counties like Buncombe can get.
Correct.
Large supply and then distribute.
Correct.
A meaningful percentage out to some of those kind of facilities.
Yes, the hope is by the time we get to that level of provider onboarding, that those providers will be receiving direct allocations from the state. If not, yes, if those allocations are sufficient and they're coming to the county, then we would be able to transfer. If they were approved through the state as a CVMS COVID-enrolled provider.
I have another question. I, I'm really pleased to hear about the equity work in particular, and I think with Winches and Appalachian Health hopefully coming online soon, that will start to address some of those challenges. And I certainly appreciate the work that is being done in other languages. However, my concern is what other types of relationships are being built to specifically reach our non-native English speakers? As we know, that's a significant portion of the residents of Buncombe County. I know these are done in both language, you know, in multiple languages, videos have been done in other languages, eight to five. However, is a prime time for that particular population of our community to be working. And they don't necessarily have access to watching these at a later date. And the relationships that they have in their community is where they tend to get their information. And building those relationships are really important for them to trust the government, Buncombe County government in particular, to issue vaccinations. So can you speak a little more in-depth specifically in regards to non-native English speakers?
And so part of what we've done throughout the entire COVID response is to work through those community leaders, both through our operations piece, but also through the joint information communications piece, that our communication team works with those key stakeholders within communities to get that message out. So the way we say it, as far as Health and Human Services, to craft that in a way that is culturally appropriate and resonates with other groups. And so our communications team continually works with those community stakeholders to get that message out about where, where are the things that are happening, when are they happening, and how can you access them? We continue to work particularly with vaccine, with community health workers that are in the community and have reached out. Our equity and our communications team have worked at, worked with not only our community health workers that are in Buncombe County, but again, those community stakeholders who have close ties to help folks understand how they can get vaccine, what are the options for them, what phases they are in, that work continues.
Just want to point out that we're also, we've provided interviews and will continue to provide interviews directly to JM Pro, which is the largest Spanish-language-based Latinx media platform in the community. And also for six or seven months now, every messaging from, from public health, whether it's at our community briefings or this briefing right now, is being live-cast in Spanish on, on our Facebook channels. So we're, we're constantly striving to make sure we reach our non-language, non-English language speakers.
And please note, it's not a criticism, I appreciate what is being done and has been done, and how it's being looked towards in the future. I'm concerned that that is a target population that is not tuned in to these briefings and such during the eight-to-five workday. And how we continue to reach them when they are not at work.
You know, a question I have, as we look ahead, and hopefully we've got a lot of vaccine, we have a lot of different organizations in the community giving vaccines. Are you going to have any way for these organizations to talk to each other? Because what happens if Al Whiteside said, "Well, we got ten locations," or, you know, "Other than the county, I'm going to sign up with all ten and see who I can get to first." But how are you going to know that, hey, this old man's already gotten his shot? And he's got eight more locations tied up? But you know, how do you look ahead to that?
So I feel like you are inside my brain space already. So I can tell you, for the actual vaccine administration piece, all vaccine providers in North Carolina must be enrolled through the vax, through the COVID vaccine management system. That's the thing we call CVMS. When you get your vaccine, you have to be put into that CVMS.
Oh, good.
System. So if you got your first vaccine with us, but then you moved to another county or whatever happened and you had to go somewhere else, they will see you in that CVMS and know that you got your first dose of whatever kind, Moderna or Pfizer, on this date at this time, and that you are eligible for your second dose. So that's how the vaccine piece works. When it comes to things like, as I mentioned with the waitlist, that is a great concern to me that folks might be on waitlists everywhere. And I, some of that will work itself out as we call people back and say, "We have an appointment available for you." And they may say, as other providers get on board, "Oh, I'm getting mine at CVS," or "I'm getting mine with my FQHC." And, and we'll just mark through, you know, we'll check them off the list and move on to the next person. But as far as your vaccine administration, that is precisely the reason the CVMS system is supposed to be, is in place. And you must be enrolled not only as a provider in that, to be able to give out vaccine, but as a recipient, you are logged into that system.
I have maybe, maybe one last question, just going to this, going to this slide about the public health burden, seventy percent, this slide that Fletch went over. I think this is a, it's an important slide, it kind of shows the order of magnitude, you know, that, that this kind of whole initiative ultimately is going to have to encompass for a county with more than a quarter of a million people and people needing to get two vaccines, it's just, it's just a, it's a lot. And so you've got these three different scenarios of kind of this, the kind of status quo, very limited vaccine supply, you know, if that doesn't change, which it will. But if it didn't, it would, you know, be a very long haul. And then looking at if we had the ability to get, you know, ten thousand a week or fifteen thousand a week, the relative timeframes to get to the seventy percent goal under those scenarios. So Fletch, it means the right way to interpret this, and we've talked about kind of what the county's plans are. There's a lot of uncertainty about kind of exactly how the private sector and other partners are going to play out yet, but we expect that to be an increasingly robust set of additional providers. But, but just kind of theoretically, I mean, if, if, if no one else were doing anything, this kind, these charts kind of show like, here's what, here's how many do need to get administered to get to these different goals on different timelines. And while we're looking forward to kind of bringing out the full capabilities of the community through these partnerships, you know, and that's the basic intent, if the county had to do it, based on the kind of logistics that you've been talking about, it sounds like the county could do it, we don't think that's the ideal, we think it's, there's a better way to do it. But if we had to, there really is kind of a, a, a pathway to doing that if, for some reason, we, we were in that, in that scenario.
Correct, not ideal and frankly not anticipated, but part of my role as President Director is these worst-case scenario plannings. And so yeah, so if, if we were getting the vaccine, that's the, again, the long ten in this poll. If we had the vaccine, that, to that rate, we could, over the six and a half months, we could do it, or over the nine and a half months, depending on the rate.
Okay.
But again, we fully anticipate other providers coming online, larger shipments of vaccine, you know, Mission being able to pivot for, and assist us as well.
Okay, great. Well, that's been, that's fantastic and very encouraging. There's maybe a question more for Avril than for Fletch. I'll just ask and anybody can field it. So are there other things that the staff need from the commission in order to make planning for assuring that we could, if the supply chain is out there to do it, that we could achieve the six-and-a-half-month timeframe in terms of the 70% goal?
Yes, sir, and we actually have that for the five o'clock conversation where you can take action, but we are requesting some budget amendments at five o'clock.
Okay, perfect. Other questions, commissioners?
I have one more question. Just could you update us sort of on the status of the EOC at this point? And whether you all envision that ramping back up relative to any of these scenarios?
We do, if this burden plays out a little bit, we're, you know, we're not getting assistance. We anticipate from community. But I think we'll also be speaking to this a little bit at five o'clock. But I think when we're looking at multiple sites, where we have not just AB Tech, but one or two vehicle-based sites, we do need to increase that footprint a little bit. We have essentially an incident management team, so a small component of a true EOC for Vax operations. But as we're assessing and going forward, we're constantly considering having to expand that.
Thank you.
All right. Stacy and Fletch, thank you so much. We appreciate you, appreciate all the work going into this from everybody on your teams. So, great job. Yes, thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. All right. Next up is a follow-up on the budget retreat. And Rafael Baptista and Rusty Mauer are both going to be helping us out with this presentation.
All right, good afternoon. So I will get us started here with our economic overview follow-ups. Then Rafael will give us some information related to the property tax rate and some benchmarking that was requested. And then there's a few other items related to education. We're still working with our education partners on that. So we'll bring that information to you, Sam will, at a future meeting. In terms of the economic overview, there were a few questions. We want to go through those. I do want to say we appreciate the time of Heidi and Clark at the chamber kind of reviewing some of this information and working through it with us. But overall, the questions were, first, a question of hiring trends by industry. Commissioner Sloan asked, "Who's hiring?" So we'll go through that. The second is Commissioner Edwards asked about benchmarking to peers. What's our, what are our employment trends versus other regions? And then the third, Commissioner Whiteside's asked a question about labor market and some demographic data, and we'll dive into that. So first of all, I'll show you a lot of charts that look like this. This is a waterfall chart that shows you the month-over-month change. So that large orange bar there is a decline from March to April of this year of 36,000 jobs. So this is the Asheville MSA, which is the entire Asheville region, several counties. And so what you see here is first and foremost, we lost 36,000 jobs in the region. And we have about a 197,000 employee workforce in this region. So we lost 18% of our regional jobs from March to April. The second key takeaway here, and this is the Asheville metropolitan area as a whole, is we've so far recovered, through November, recovered 20,600 jobs, but 15,400 are not yet recovered. What that means is as of the end of November, 8% of people locally that were working in February are currently out of work. So Commissioner Sloan, to your question of who's hiring, the short answer is everyone. And it's because of the dramatic effect of this pandemic and then kind of that recovery. So we'll go through two sectors to look at that. The first being our hardest hit, and that's leisure and hospitality, which a lot of tourism-related businesses are included. So when we look at Asheville leisure and hospitality, we see there, from March to April, we lost 18,800 jobs. And so what that is, is that is over half of all job loss in this region was in leisure and hospitality. That industry lost 64% of its workforce month-over-month, over half of the area workforce. And just for context, we have about, it's about 30,000 individuals, 29,000 to 30,000 individuals in the region in that workforce. So significant job loss in leisure and hospitality. Since April, we've recovered 11,200 jobs, but we still have 7,600 yet to be recovered, which means 26% of individuals in leisure and hospitality who were working in February were not working as of November. So that's leisure.
Go ahead. And do we have any further breakout, like within that sector? So this is like obviously hotels, restaurants, other associated businesses too? Or for like a county level, is like this sector about as detailed as we can drill down?
This sector is with the month-over-month data at the MSA level. We can get a little bit more refined, but it's not from that same data source through the Bureau of Labor Statistics, month-over-month data with the employer survey. So this is the most granular that we've gotten to so far, but some of that data comes out and is a little bit more lagged.
Okay, thank you.
So leisure and hospitality is not our biggest sector, but it was our hardest-hit sector. Our largest sector is actually education and health services. And so education and health services in the region has about 37,600 employees. It's about 19% of the region's workforce. And what you see here is we lost 6,000 jobs in this sector. That sector had a 16% job loss from March to April. So far, recovered 2,900 jobs, almost half of the job loss, yet to recover 3,100 jobs. And as of February, 8% of the employed individuals are, as of November, versus February, 8% are not employed. So from an industry perspective locally, most industries are recovering and hiring. So wanted to call out those two. And now in terms of the question of benchmarking peers, want to dive into the, specifically the overall and then the leisure and hospitality. The first market we're going to show you today is the Wilmington MSA. And the reason is Wilmington is also a tourism-based economy, has some of the same relative share of leisure and hospitality. So on the left here, this is the same chart you've seen, but it's on a percentage basis to help normalize between the two. Asheville has about 197,000 in the MSA employees, 197,000. And in Wilmington, there's about 133,000 employees. But both have a similar share of leisure and hospitality. So the left chart here is what you've seen. It's the Asheville total employment. And on the right, you see Wilmington. And what you see here is a minus 16.9%, so minus 17 versus minus 18 in Asheville. Very similar trends in both from March to April. And what we see is that both regions have experienced significant job loss and so far an incomplete recovery. So you see there, May, June starts to pick back up. It's still improving, but about halfway recovered. So you see Asheville is about minus 8% still, Wilmington about minus 6%. And so then we drill into leisure and hospitality. And again, you saw Asheville from March to April lost 64%. And then May gained back 16.8, June 16.4. Very quick recovery, but still incomplete. In Wilmington, very similar trends. Lost 66% of employment in that first month, picked up 17% and then 23. Mind you, this data is not seasonally adjusted. So for a beach economy, you would expect that summer to have a little bit sharper recovery right away. So leisure and hospitality employment fell more than 64% in both regions and remains minus 25% in both regions. So some challenges in that sector for us and in that peer of the Wilmington metropolitan area. So that's a look at a similar economy, similar peer. But the other natural comparison point is a local peer, and that's Greenville, the Greenville, South Carolina MSA. And so when we look at Asheville, same chart here, you see Asheville on the left, minus 18.3%. And Greenville starts to get a little bit interesting. You see a less severe recovery, minus 10%. And what's fascinating from this analysis is Greenville has not only experienced a full recovery, they have experienced growth since February. And that's all industry's total workforce. And so we start to ask the question, why Asheville has an incomplete recovery compared to Greenville's complete recovery? It could be partially diversification of the economy, higher reliance on manufacturing, less reliance on tourism, less relative importance of leisure and hospitality. There's a number of factors at play, but it's an important comparison. And for context, the Asheville MSA is about 197,000, 197,000 employees, and Greenville is about 433,000. And so then we look into, again, that comparison of leisure and hospitality. So again, same chart here with Asheville minus 64%. And when we look at Greenville's leisure and hospitality on the right, it's a less severe, but still 44% employment loss month-over-month, but then a much quicker recovery. And so they still are sitting around minus 5% in leisure and hospitality, but not nearly the same as where we are with minus 25%. We don't have a good answer why Asheville remains minus 25% and Greenville's minus 5%, but a portion of that could be related to some of the reliance on tourism versus, so leisure and hospitality is restaurants, hotels, accommodation, performing arts. And some of that could be related to tourism and travel versus, you know, kind of leisure in place, if you will. So two market comparisons there, just kind of wanted to give you an overview there of kind of where we are versus some peers. And then the third question was related to labor market and demographic data. And in a perfect world, we'd be able to get to this isolated data for Buncombe County and industry and race and age and gender. And unfortunately, we don't have that level of granularity in our data. So instead, what we've done is we've tried to take some national data and really national demographic data related to the leisure and hospitality sector and use that as, just to give you some information. And if you think of that locally, it might give you an idea of some of the effects. I will say the latest jobs report we have is December. And what we learned from that jobs report nationally is the country as a whole lost 140,000 jobs. If you look by gender, the country lost, the females in this country lost 156,000 jobs. 150, 156,000 jobs. Men gained 16,000 jobs. So there are some gender-based effects when we start looking at the demographics of what does that workforce shift look like? So it's, it just reiterates the importance of continuing to look at this topic and understand what is at play. But again, Bureau of Labor statistic data doesn't allow us to get too granular to this specific question. So we'll look at national data and I'll go through that. When we think about demographics for the leisure and hospitality industry, the first that we think about is, that we've got here is age. And so what this graph is showing you is from left to right, younger to older, and it's the percent of the workforce at that age. So the blue line is the hospitality industry. It's higher percent at the younger ages. The red line is more of a standard for all other ages. It's kind of what we expect in kind of the workforce. Fewer, very young, as you get into that prime working age, it kind of levels off its even distribution and then tails off towards retirement. What this tells you is the leisure and hospitality industry skews younger. So that's our first kind of national takeaway in terms of demographics. This chart is educational attainment. So each of the different shades of blue there, starting with hospitality industry, from left to right, the lightest is less than high school, then high school, some college, college, graduate or professional degree. What this chart is telling you is that in the leisure and hospitality industry, about 50% of workers either have a high school degree or less. Compare that to the bar below, other industries, about 33% have a high school degree or less. So what that tells us is nationally, leisure and hospitality skews less educated. So it skews younger, skews less educated. And then the third we look at is income. And so this is income quintiles, it's individual income level. So the bottom quintile, zero to 18,000 as an individual. So you see in the hospitality, that's about 35% of individuals. And then the second quintile, 18,000 to 33,000, that's about 65% of people in leisure and hospitality work, make $33,000 or less. And then other industries compare that to about 36%. So we know that leisure and hospitality skews younger, skews less educated, and skews lower wage. All three important demographics to help us understand who is affected when we talk about leisure and hospitality. And so this next metric is not specific to leisure and hospitality, but this is national unemployment by race. Again, trying to find the best data that helps to tell the story by these different demographics. And so what you see here is before the pandemic, the orange line at the top there on the far left was black or African-American. Around 6%, that was black or African-American unemployment. And among the groups listed here, that was the highest. You see a peak in about April, May of around 17%. And then it's recovered down to about 10%. Similarly, the green line was slightly above 4, that's Hispanic or Latino, peaked around 19% in April and has trended down with the last month trending a little bit up. And then you see down at the bottom, around 3% was white and Asian. Both spiked around 14% in April. Asian actually trended up and has had a slower recovery. Both are now down around 6% here in December. So what this tells you is that the unemployment effects have been more pronounced towards the black or African-American population as well as the Hispanic or Latino population relative to white, non-Hispanic or Asian. So again, these are national trends, but if we were to take them and think about them here locally, it might give you a little bit of a, somewhat of an answer to that question of who's being affected when we think about demographics. And so before I turn it over to Rafael to talk about property tax, just to wrap up, most local industries are now recovering and hiring. We know that. The recovery in Asheville mirrors Wilmington but lags Greenville. And the leisure and hospitality sector is the hardest hit here locally, which we had talked about a little bit in December.
Thanks for this presentation. Could you repeat the statistic about unemployment by gender?
Yeah, so December's jobless claims report, we saw in terms of employment, females in, across the entire US, lost 156,000 jobs. And men across the United States gained 16,000 for a net loss of 140,000.
That's a pretty stark, two starkly different stories. So if we assume that that trend held true locally, we would think that as 2020 ended, a large number of women lost jobs or left the workforce. Presumably, we think because women often are carrying family responsibilities related to childcare. And then, and then if we think locally about, if this national data around race holds true locally, we'd also think that particularly black and Hispanic or Latino communities would have been harder hit. And presumably, or potentially, a question would be, women of color potentially would be the hardest hit of any local demographic. Maybe, we don't have the local data. But as we think about the strategies and that we're thinking about, not just related to vaccine, but also related to other kinds of emergency assistance, those trends feel helpful and informing, informing the strategies. Thanks for walking us through that.
Absolutely. All right, and I will turn it over to Rafael.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So I'm here to talk about the property tax piece of questions that you raised during the commissioner meetings. All right, there we go. So at your board retreat back in December, you all asked a couple of questions related to the property tax. And my goal today is to walk you through the answers and provide you some data related to those questions. The first question was, what is our property tax rate in comparison to our peer counties? And then what is our property tax burden in comparison to peer counties? We're going to actually dig deep a little bit and help you understand that from the context of affordable housing and cost burden. So I wanted to start by looking at a statewide level and show you where Buncombe County lies statewide. So this map from the North Carolina Associate County Commissioners, Associate Tax Rates by County. There's a lot of stuff here, so I'll just kind of tell you the important stuff here. So when you look at the map, the darker the color, the higher the property tax rate. The lighter the color, the lower the property tax rate. So you look at where the circle is where Buncombe County is, and you look at the counties around us, all the counties that abut Buncombe County are the same shade as us. So what that's telling us is, in addition to us having a relatively low shade, so relatively low property tax rate compared to the rest of the state, we're completely in line with our regional partners. Then if you look at the actual table and if you could read the numbers, what you would see is of our partnering counties, we actually have, with the exception of Madison County, the lowest property tax rate of any of the counties that we touch. So in our direct region, we're the second lowest property tax rate. Statewide, we have the 14th lowest property tax rate. So that's from a statewide perspective, just to provide that context.
So we're 14th out of 100?
Correct, 14th out of 100.
Eighty-six other counties have higher tax rates than we do.
Correct. Yes. And the statewide average is .6760. And Buncombe County said .5290 to let you see kind of the gap between us and the state average.
Say the state one more time.
The state average is .6, .7, sorry, .6760.
Thanks.
All right, so I'll move on to our- So I'll move on to our peer counties. And when we look at the peer counties for the purpose of this analysis, we looked at the Big Ten Counties and Orange County. So the eleventh biggest county is essentially North Carolina. And it's really difficult to compare apples to apples, tax value and property tax rates among counties because everyone's on a different reappraisal cycle, the way they determine a median tax value is different. So we had to do some work to normalize and create as good of a proxy as we could. So what we did was we pulled median sales data, so the median sales price for a house in each of these counties from the North National Association Realtors for last year for Q three of twenty twenty. We took that, then we took the property tax rate and applied the property tax rate to that median sale price. So the median house value is the sale price. Then we calculated a median tax bill. So that median tax bill is not the actual tax bill, but it's the max proxy for a tax bill. If you were to back into the tax value, you should get a similar story. And we actually did look at a couple of different races running the numbers and we always came, we came out with the same story every single time. So if we go through this chart and we look at the property tax, we started with that rate. Buncombe County has the lowest property tax rate of the big eleven counties in North Carolina. We are one of only two counties that are in the fifties, everyone else is in sixties, seventies. And Orange County gets you into the high eighties there. So property tax wide, we're at the bottom, we're the lowest. Then if you look at the median sales price, the median home value, we jump up to fourth, right? So we got Orange County, we got Union County, and we got Wake County that have a higher valuation than us. But everyone has a lower valuation. So lowest tax rate, fourth highest valuation. What does that mean for your actual tax burden? It means we're seventh out of eleventh. So a low rate, high valuation, we're still below average on our property tax burden for the big eleven counties in North Carolina. So that's kind of where we stand among our peers. So if we dig a little deeper and say, okay, what does this mean for households in Buncombe County? We ran through, working with our tax assessment department, our planning department, to come up with some numbers for you. And before we go deeper into this, I want to give a couple of caveats. The first caveat is that this is looking at homeownership. This does not include renters. We just don't have good enough data that's granular enough at the MSA level to give you rental data. And this is looking at county taxes, not looking at specific taxes for Asheville, Weaverville, Woodfin and all that. So this is kind of just looking at the county tax rate. So at the top, what we did is we look at the sale price for a home at the three different quartiles. So the twenty-fifth percentile, the fifteenth, the first quartile, twenty-fifth percentile, the second quartile, the median, and the third quartile, which is your seventieth percentile. We said, what's the sale price for a home in Buncombe County, looking at the most real-time data we have? For the first quartile, that's a two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar house. At the median, that's a three hundred and four thousand, five hundred dollar house. And at the third quartile, that's a four hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollar level. So we then took that pricing there and we said, what's the actual tax value assigned to that? So our tax department did that back-end calculation. Then we said, what is going to be the property tax bill for that house? And then what's an estimated monthly mortgage? And we created some assumptions using national data of what that monthly mortgage looks like. Then we created an annual cost of homeownership for that house based off of property tax and off of your mortgage. So you'll see there is that for your two hundred, your first quartile house, it's twelve thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. For your median house, it's fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And for your third quartile house, it's twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. And then what we said is, what about the different income levels for individuals in Buncombe County? Can they afford that house in terms of homeownership? So for individuals who are extremely low income in a family of four, they're going to make about twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Based on federal standards, you should spend no more of your house of your income, well, no more than thirty percent of your income on homeownership or housing costs. So for a family of four making twenty-six thousand, five hundred, homeownership at the twenty-fifth percentile or above is unaffordable in Buncombe County. For a family of four making thirty-five thousand, eight hundred, homeownership for homes at a twenty-fifth percentile or above is unaffordable. For families making eighty percent of AMI or fifty-seven thousand, three hundred, you see that that twenty-fifth percentile home is affordable. And there's sufficient gap there that even with utilities included, which we don't have the data for, you likely are still affordable. But the median home and the third quartile home are not necessarily affordable. For the family making a median household income, which is seventy-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, we're looking at a situation where the first and second quartile homes should be affordable. And that third quartile home, that's going to be really dependent on utility costs. So I think the story here that you can take away is that Buncombe County, because of the high value and sales price of homes, it makes homeownership at the twenty-fifth percentile and above relatively unaffordable for lower income families. And that's before we incorporate or consider a property tax bill. So it's not the tax bill that's making the unaffordability, it's the mortgage, but the tax bill comes in addition to that. And while we don't have rental data here, it's important to note that when the property owner base their property tax bill, they do pass that property tax bill onto the renter in the form of an elevated rent. So the renters do pay. So it's difficult to tell you what the fifth, tenth and fifteenth percentile look like. So there might be opportunities for the lower income families to have homeownership there. But if we look at the twenty-fifth percentile, you see a stark story here. So a couple of key takeaways from this presentation are, one, is that we have the lowest tax rate among our peer counties and one, the lowest ones in North Carolina, that we have the fourth highest valuation among our peer counties. But we come out seventh out of eleven in terms of our tax bill, again, because of our low tax rate. Then when you look at our specific Buncombe County and the burden of our property taxes and homeownership costs, we see the housing is affordable primarily for those at the median home household income level. And that our high valuation leads to higher higher homeownership costs and higher property tax bills despite a lower tax rate comparatively. And I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions?
I had one question. I was trying to take take notes there. You mentioned we were seventh out of the top eleven counties in the state for population. But was that weighted by by something, the the seventh ranking?
No, there was no way there. No, it was just straight up. We looked at the eleventh largest and then we just said, where's our tax rate fall? What you could do is you could wait it to look at, you could get a lot more complex and do some more weighting. But we we did do that analysis, but the story still remained the same. There were still around the seventh out of eleventh there.
That was, okay, thank you.
This is great analysis. Thank you very much. You know, I've served in local government for many years. And this chart that looks at like home values with the tax rate and how it compares to other counties, this is something I've like asked many people to do. It's the first time like someone's really kind of like, let's really do that. So I think it's, I think it's very illuminating in terms of how our relatively low tax rate, but our relatively high cost of living plays out for, you know, an average person or family in our community compared to other counties across the state. So thank you very much. It's a lot of great information and I appreciate y'all doing it.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I like to say tax assessment, planning and budget helped tremendously with this and the North Carolina Association County Commissioner, so it was a team effort.
Great.
Do we have any way of looking at our tax rate or comparing our tax rate we do to other counties versus the services we give?
So when we started this analysis, that's the route we wanted to take, was to try to understand that question particularly from a fee perspective. The challenge for us was, and with the turnaround of with the holidays, the December retreat and here, we were just not able to get that information from our peer counties. We could attempt again to see if we can get that more detailed information. The the challenge becomes that different counties have different relationship with their municipalities. So it gets very difficult to do that, but we can definitely spend some time to try and see if there's a way to do that. We didn't find one initially, but we're more than happy to look to see if there's a way to do that.
I hope you can do some, I would like to see some of that because that would really come in good to, that we can use that when we're looking at revaluation, where we're going with tax rate and all. And we need to, in order to look at that, you know, to look at the services we're giving versus, you know, other counties and all. I'd just like to know where we are.
We can definitely look into that and see what we can produce for you.
This is great, thank you.
Thank you, it's good information, yeah.
Thank you.
This is sort of a little bit of a rabbit hole, but kind of broadly relevant. Would it be possible to get some case studies on how different counties are thinking about special taxing districts? Our special assessment districts, relative to services provided, like within some of these counties, in addition to this, there may be those special assessment districts as well. And just having a little bit more understanding of how different communities are thinking about that as part of the whole picture around property taxes would be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, we've got just about fifteen minutes left. We're going to run out of time, I think. We've got two items left and we were planning for about fifteen minutes on both. Avril, how would you like to use the last fifteen minutes we have right now?
On the facility study, we actually have the consultant standing by. That's going to do that. So it'll take us a few minutes to get her on Zoom.
Okay, great. And then how do you want to handle the emergency paid sick leave discussion?
I believe we can move that, Sharon. We do, we can move that, sir. We do have a couple of individuals that are caught right now because the time has expired and they've used all the leave that they have. But we can always go back and address that if you choose to go forward with a recommendation at that time.
Do you want to move that to our five o'clock meeting or do you want to take it up next week?
Five o'clock.
Okay, sure.
We're not asking for an ask this time, we want some discussion around. So we can talk about that and then bring it back later for for ask unless you're ready for an ask today.
Sounds good. All right, we're ready, we're ready for the facility study presentation. Thank you all for being with us on Zoom.
Sir, Chairman, Commissioners, while Rachel's pulling up the presentation there, I'd like to provide you with some background information concerning this project. Comprehensive facilities plan consists of three major components, building conditions assessment, space management planning and a master plan for our library system. Join us today is CPOs Rachel Nelson and Kenneth Mayers. Rachel is our project manager and Kenneth is vice president, CPO. Jim Blatt, our library director, is also on the line. Rachel, if you would.
All right. Thank you very much for having us today. I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. What I'll do is I'll take you through an overview and update of where we are in our master plan and our comprehensive facilities plan and as well as give you an example of some of the items that we're working on today and the deliverable that we will have at the end of this. In terms of the schedule, we've been working with Mike and his group since July on the assessments, moving then into the analysis phase. Right now, we're in the final stages of the analysis and developing the drivers for the capital projects, as you'll see in the upcoming presentation. We plan to have the final presentation ready for you in the March-April timeframe for that commissioner's meeting. Our first step to this project was these building assessments. We looked at thirty-eight buildings across Buncombe County. We took 3D scans of all of these facilities, made a list of deficiencies and maintenance items, as you see in that example below. And I'll take you through a brief example of what that spatial data looks like. I'll take you through that in a little bit here. But those 3D scans are so detailed that in the libraries, we can even see the titles of the books on the shelf. So it really allowed us to get a a good understanding of what the facilities' conditions are moving forward. For the site assessments, we reviewed deficiencies, any needed improvements, looked at zoning setback, building height restrictions, especially as they relate to building expansions or new construction on any of these sites. The dashboard is our final deliverable to to the county. It's a mobile system that's easy to use and consolidates all the information that we've gathered for you. That dashboard is in a digital format. It allows anybody to search by building. And then within that building allows to see the spatial data for that building. This is what I was referring to with those 3D scans that we have for each of these facilities. And again, we've noted any any items of note within each of those 3D scans. We can see the assessment summaries and overall conditions of each of these facilities. The site plan and analysis for each building is linked here. And the current department layout, that I'll get into a little bit more later, where we looked at where each department is located within each of these facilities. Also from there, we can link to the departments that are within that building. In this building in particular, we have the planning department. They did an exten- extensive survey, department survey, and that's all linked within this as well as organizational charts noting future growth projections for the next fifteen years. As I mentioned, for the departments, we started with an assessment of their current needs. We did a very extensive survey for each of those departments, two interviews with each department across the county to understand their current needs, future needs, department needs, adjacencies and growth projections. And looking at that, we did an analysis of telecommuters, especially in this current environment, to understand who those people are and what departments that they work. And I'll get into that a little bit more in a couple of slides. For the analysis, as you saw in the example, we've noted which departments are in which areas of each building to see whether there are inefficiencies in the plan or whether there are growth opportunities for those departments as they may expand in the next fifteen years. In terms of telecommuting, we identified that there were two hundred and eighty-three people across Buncombe County that indicated that they would telecommute post-pandemic if policy allowed. Those were primarily located within the IT department, public health, economic services and social work services departments. And a number of those people in those departments are already working on a telecommute type basis or were previously working prior to the pandemic. We do understand that any of those people who are telecommuting, many of them would still need to provide, would still need to provide some touchdown shared space for them for any part-time telecommuters. But looking at that in terms of a space analysis, two hundred and eighty-three people, and if that means a reduction of about eighty square feet per person for that private type space, that's a reduction of about twenty-two thousand, seven hundred square feet of employee-related space, just in terms of the telecommuting aspect. For our space needs drivers, we took information from the surveys, the interviews, building assessments and came up with a series of drivers that impact the direction for future capital planning. These drivers allow us, for example, looking at a couple of these, the construction of a new fleet in general services building that's currently in in design affects the general services department, grounds department and fleet department. And that subsequently affects three facilities. So looking at these drivers and planning ahead for the capital planning is what are the best ways to backfill those facilities when they are vacated due to that construction of that new facility? In the same sense, telecommuting is another one of our drivers. It affects primarily those four departments that we mentioned earlier, that are primarily located within forty Cox, thirty-five Woodfin, fifty-two Cox and the interchange building. And so again, what are the best ways to backfill those spaces if those people do telecommute and spaces are opened up? And what is the best use for those spaces moving forward, especially as we look at interchange? Where there's a good portion of that building that could be telecommuting in the future? And again, what's the best use of that facility moving forward? Creation of a backup EOC was determined as a very important driver. The possibility of a central train. Um, the possibility of a central training center, creation of an ag center. Veteran services and HHS, possibly a separation of, of those in terms of location and adjacency. Um, same condition with the Wick West and the Sheriff. Creation of a consolidated building for forward-facing departments. Um, those departments noted on the screen are generally located in about four different facilities right now. And so the efficiencies that would be gained by co-locating some of those, um, those facilities. And also combining that with the knowledge that the building in which many of them are located has some concerns. In terms of the maintenance items that would need to be upgraded as well as some ADA and accessibility, um, upgrades. And that ties again with recreation services, um, with those accessibility concerns. We also looked, um, are looking at the lease buildings, which are noted here. And what's the best use for the departments within those spaces? What's the best location for those departments moving forward? Is it to maintain those leases or is it to look at some of this consolidation or these, um, this changes due to adjacencies? And I can dive into this a little bit further if you'd like as well. In terms of the libraries, we did a much deeper dive on the future library models, needs and operations. Uh, that involved a public engagement survey, thirteen focus group meetings, over forty-six participants. Benchmarking comparisons, library interviews, demographic and a market segmentation study. And then a look at what that potential future model is for libraries in Buncombe County. Uh, some of that, now that data that we got back from the engagement. Um, just I've got a example of that here on the screen. Um, and I want to point out a couple of things. Um, branch libraries should be everything to everyone. That was a big, um, piece that came back, um, over and over is that those branch libraries are really important. Um, because those are the neighborhood and community spaces. Um, there is a, a need for some more of that library provided technology. Um, we see that in the most important adult type spaces, that library provided technology. And then again, and then the future of libraries built around four insights, which of those four insights are the most important? Um, and that couple of those thoughts are on the screen there as well. In terms of library benchmarking, um, I've got a few points up on the screen. I don't want to go through all of them here. But I do want to point out Buncombe County libraries, uh, ranks first in the peer set for physical materials. And for programs and attendance for children's programs, um, but has the fewest public computers. So, um, there's some part of this library study was looking at what are the strengths of the Buncombe County library system? And what are the areas of improvement and what is the best way to balance those two? The current library organization is a central library, that's PAC library. Um, with a number of, uh, branch libraries. Uh, mostly, uh, significantly smaller, um, some of them in the twenty thousand square foot range. Um, and then looking at how that looks, um, in that current organization in the future. Are there additional branch models that come into that? A potential future organizational model, which was presented to the library, uh, board, uh, earlier this week, last week. Um, is, um, is having a, a number of regional branch libraries, one of which could be the PAC library. And then maybe, uh, expanding upon some of those others that are acting as regional libraries. Still very important to keep in mind the, the need for those kind of neighborhood type spaces. And making sure that if this model is, um, is what you go ahead with, that those regional libraries maintain that neighborhood feel. And so some feedback that we received, um, from the library board, um, again, flexibility. Um, that people, library staff and patrons are priority in designing the system. So the regional model does allow for some efficiencies, but making sure that the staff is not lost within those efficiencies. Um, Jim, I, did you want to speak anymore to the library piece at all?
Yeah, I think I did a pretty good job capturing, um, what we know so far. That I will say the board, uh, seemed largely intrigued by the regional model. Uh, with, uh, you know, one of the, some of the concerns that, um, Rachel just mentioned. Uh, not wanting to lose kind of that neighborhood feel of, of the libraries as they are. And also, um, focusing on making sure that we have adequate staffing to staff the libraries. Right now, we're particularly challenged on the area she brought up earlier in one of the, the previous slides. So that would be a, a major consideration, whatever model we choose.
Um, and that is the end of my presentation here. I know I went through a lot of information pretty quickly. So if you'd like me to jump back to anything, please let me know.
Um, Rachel, we are running out of time, but can you share quickly the, can you share quickly the timeline of when this is expected to be completed? And bring that to the board so they can have more dialogue?
Uh, yes. So we are currently planning, uh, we're, right now, we are putting together all of these capital planning. Um, for your, um, more on the, the existing building, um, putting the numbers together for that. Um, and then what we are also looking for is some feedback on some of these drivers. To make sure that we're going in the right direction with these, that if some of these are important. Like for example, if this forward-facing, uh, building is important, um, and a priority. That we make sure that we put that into a fifteen-year capital plan and look at how that happens and where that goes. Um, and same thing with the libraries, making sure that we have the right library model. Um, in order to look at then what that does with some of these lease facilities. How that affects some of our larger facilities, which maybe would become a regional model or regional library. And then how that affects the, the current central library in PAC. Um, so we're looking at wrapping this up in the, uh, March-April. I believe we're planning on taking it to the April county commissioner's meeting, to your April meeting as a final.
So Commissioner, would it be appropriate to add this to the agenda next week? Or you want to bring it back in two weeks to deep, dig into the drivers and give some direction of where you want to go on some of those drivers that she mentioned?
Sure. I mean, this, this, this seems really great, high-level information, but definitely, I'm not really clear on all the implications of it. So I think taking a deeper dive would be, would be great.
So that would be the February second meeting? You want to bring it back for a deeper dive?
Sure, if that, uh, agenda is looking overall like a good, a good time to do it, then, um, sounds good.
Okay, would it be briefing or a regular meeting? A briefing is only two hours and COVID takes up an hour of that. So we can add it to a presentation at the next meeting, so you can dig into it a little bit?
Right. I mean, and I'd, let's, I, it seems like maybe if, additional discussion at a briefing setting sounds good. We might have to take different pieces of it, you know, cause I don't, I don't know if there might be too much here to cover all of it in one briefing meeting. So whatever you think is the right way to do it, and we could, if we need to have part of it at a regular meeting too. Just whatever fits with the timing we have available at each meeting is fine with me.
Okay. We will work on some scheduling.
Great.
Thanks.
All right, thank you all for the update on the facility study. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, we are at time. So let's take it, let's take a five-minute break. And then we'll reconvene for our regular meeting and we're going to move the emergency paid six, sick leave item to, uh, a new business discussion. Is that where you want to do that?
Can we do it as presentation?
That'd be fine. All right, great. All right, we'll be back in five minutes for the regular meeting.